All right, the recordings have been started. This is a virtual meeting of the township of Newtown in Delaware County for the Board of Supervisors. And as we've been doing for almost a year now, we're taking public comment one of four ways during the meeting. You may get public comment by dropping comments off at the blue box out in front of the building prior to the meeting. This blue box is out at the main entrance as if you're entering into the library before you come up the stairs. It's just off to the right. I will say I checked the blue box prior to the meeting and there was no public comment in the box. You also during the meeting may raise your hand virtually. You have that option as if you're on the screen through the computer or if you've phoned in. If by chance, for whatever reason, you're having trouble with either one of those two options, or you just want to make public comment in writing, you may make public comment by sending public comment to publiccomment@newtown township.org. Again, that's publiccomment@newtown township.org. And both of those words, public comment and newtown township.org are all one. There's no spaces in between those. If you are asking to speak by sending in a comment or sending it in, please make sure you give your name. And if you've called in, please make sure you give us the phone number which you called in so we know who to recognize. Mr. Chairman, those are the instructions. I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Nice. The board was in executive session prior to this meeting to discuss two potential legal matters. With that, and with no other information before the board or any other comments, it doesn't look like. Mr. Nice, could you call the roll?
Sure can. Mr. Non.
I am present.
Mr. Partridge.
Here.
Mr. Roberts Lightcap.
Here.
Mr. Russo.
Here.
Mr. Altieri.
Here.
And I have looked and your solicitor and engineer are here and so is your man.
Thank you, Mr. Nice. For tonight's mode of silence, let's keep in our thoughts and in our prayers, the Elston family. Jan Elston lost her battle with cancer on Friday. Jan was one of the original members of the Bartram Bridge Joint Commission. She's been a member resident of this township for, I want to say eighty, eighty-one years. She's very instrumental in the bridge restoration and preservation. So with with heavy hearts, let's remember her family in our prayers this evening. Thank you. We have before this meeting's agenda. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda or consideration of any changes.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second it.
Motion is made by Supervisor Roberts Lightcap, seconded by Supervisor Altieri to approve this meeting's agenda. There's no further questions or discussions from members of the board, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposition? Motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda is public comment for agenda items only. Mr. Nice indicated there was no comment in there. If there's any members of the general public at this point that would like to comment their own line, I would like to comment on any of our things on the board's agenda, please raise your hand and be acknowledged.
Currently have one hand raised, Ms. Wilson.
Go ahead, Ms. Wilson.
Patty Wilson, forty-one eleven Battles Lane. I have two items. One is the minutes that say on them that there was no public comment. But in reviewing last, the last meeting, I note that there was public comment from somebody talking about the decision on one, two, three walnut. Secondly, on your agenda tonight is the is the streets policy that that talks an awful lot about private roads, but it certainly seems as though an awful lot of it really is related to the concern over the paper streets that exist in two of the older neighborhoods, Florida Park and the Newtown Heights. I would ask that you look at that policy in terms of the thirteen roads that were identified as potentially paper streets there and differentiate those for if somebody wants to go ahead and turn a private road or a non-road that doesn't meet our criteria so that we have a differentiation between roads that years ago, maybe the township should have taken care of, should have made part of township roads and didn't versus current approvals where we have allowed developments that have private roads because they asked for waivers on road whiffs. Part of the policy speaks an awful lot about how to pay for these roads. As a township resident, recognizing that the folks in those older neighborhoods pay the same tax rate as I do, but at this point, because they are paper streets, they don't get their roads plowed. They don't get their roads taken care of. I would ask for a more generous policy that certainly in any of these older neighborhoods that we as a township try to identify those roads individually and make a project out of finding out whether or not we're going to designate them as private roads or we're going to take paper streets, which should have been dealt with in land development and turn them into public roads. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Any further hands up or any other comments for items on the agenda?
I do have one that just came in via the via an email. And if you wish, I'll go ahead and read it in.
Is it is it involving an agenda item?
I it'll be something that I'm going to report on under my management report, but it is not an agenda item.
Well, I mean, we do, was it in at the deadline? I guess we set a time limit. I'm not trying to be difficult, but we do set a time limit of when he's supposed to be in. And obviously, this came in after seven o'clock, I guess, or?
It came in at seven oh three. We typically take email comments throughout the meeting.
Well, go ahead, Mr. Nice, you may read it.
So it's from Reggie Subersky at Forte Timber Lane. Newtown's appointment of a health inspector will no longer be serving the township of Newtown in the health-related capacity. The health-related practice of using Marple's code enforcement officer was most concerning in that for quite some time, Marple Township's Department of Health was not functioning properly. Marple's Health Department's lack of proper degree medical practitioner to ensure the Health Department in Marple. According to the minutes to be approved at tonight's meeting, a period of ninety days has been extended to Newtown by Marple Township. The service of Newtown's appointed health inspector is to continue. Please explain this happening as it relates to this health issue. Thank you, Reggie Subersky.
You'll be addressing that in your manager's minute, correct?
I am.
All right. If there's no further comment on agenda items, we will move on. We have before this meeting's the agenda from our February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one meeting. Would anybody like to offer a motion on those minutes and consideration of the comments made by Ms. Wilson regarding perhaps any oversight from those minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes with the public comment just addressed in there.
Okay, motion was made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made by Supervisor Altieri, seconded by Supervisor Roberts Lightcap to approve the minutes with the notation of the public comment. Any further questions or discussions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda, we have a one resolution. And if it pleases the board, I'm going to read this one, just, you know, because it's the National Engineers Week Resolution. So I'm going to offer the following motion. This is a resolution twenty-twenty-one twelve. This, whereas the week of February twenty-first through twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one was observed as a National Engineers Week with the theme Engineering Engineers Inspiring Wonder. And whereas engineers use their scientific and technical knowledge and skills in creative and innovative ways to fulfill society's needs. And whereas engineers face the major technological challenges of our time from rebuilding towns devastated by natural disaster, cleaning up the environment and ensuring safe, clean and efficient measures of energy to designing information systems that will speed our country into the future. And whereas engineers are encouraging our young math and science students to realize the practical power of their knowledge. And whereas we look forward more than ever to engineers and their knowledge and skills to meet the challenges of the twenty-first century. Now therefore be resolved that Newtown Township hereby joins the nation in honoring and celebrating the achievements of engineers during Engineers Week held February twenty-first through the twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-one, adopted this eighth day of May or March twenty-twenty-one by Newtown Township Board of Supervisors. John A. Non, P.E., Chairman, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Russo. Any further questions or discussions on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, next we have reports from our township managers. We got a couple of things here, so Steve, take it away.
Yeah, so want to do a quick update on Aqua. Aqua is doing a project on Clyde Lane. They came in, we've coordinated that as much as we can with the work that's being done on Westchester Pike. Part of the reason why they're doing it right now is it was actually part of the project that they did several years ago on Westchester Pike that never got completed. And so they're picking up that piece of it. In addition to that, Pico has been in and doing work along Clyde. And so there's going to be repair that has to be done to Clyde Lane anyway. And Aqua jumped in and tried to get that repair, they're trying to get their repairs done. So it's just one repair and we'll get it all done at the same time. So I just wanted to let you know that. Actually, I believe they may have actually started this week on that. In addition, I think there was some confusion about an Aqua project along two fifty-two. There was a notice sent out last week that they were going to be doing a project that would go from this week until the end of December. There's also been a second notice sent out that that project's actually limited to two weeks. And all basically they're doing is repairing the road that they just put temporary patches on when the main broke back last year, right after two fifty-two was paid. So they're working with Penn Dot on that. There was some confusion. When I contacted Aqua, they didn't even realize their contractor was going out and doing it. So anyway, so just so you know, that's what's happening. And that will be being done over the next two weeks. Probably won't take that long. I think there's only a couple of days worth of work. But the contractor, when they filled out the form, filled it out incorrectly and it came out as being a nine-month project. So and it's a sub of Aquas, it's not Aqua themselves. So I did, I did follow up on that and that's where we are with those. So if you see the trucks out there, yes, they're out there, but it's not for, it's not until December. The next thing, we have the two RFPs that are out right now. And the one R, actually, there's three out right now. One is for the arborist and we're starting to get some feedback on that one. It looks good. We got the health inspector RFP out. That one's a little more difficult. There's not a lot of folks out there that are specifically doing that. I will make note that having some discussions with Marple in regards to they're actually not doing much with our health inspections even right now. So I'm trying to get somebody in to do that as soon as possible so that we're covered. Thirdly, the we're finalizing, and I believe the RFP for the mowing contract has gone out so that we can get that back in time for you to award it before the growing season starts. And if the rest of this week is any indication, that may be sooner than I anticipated. So with the winter that we've had, so that's great. So one of the, two of our committees, our Parks and Rec Committee and our EAC Committee Chairmans, Bruce and Wade suggested to me, and I actually think it's a reasonably good idea. Actually, I think it's a good idea, not reasonably good idea, but I think it's a reasonable suggestion, is that we would go to have a quarterly meeting of all of our committees so that they would know, they could talk to each other and do some of the kind of coordinate some of the different things that are going on between the different committees. Particularly now that we've added the Shade Tree Committee. EAC has got a little bit of confusion as to what's their role versus what's the Shade Trees role versus what's the Park and Rec role. And so we're looking at doing that. We think that's a good idea. I'm looking at doing that and having a meeting once a quarter with them if the board is in agreement to me doing that. And what we thought was, what I thought is we would do that. And then the last thirty minutes, I would invite other committees from around town to come in and join to give us just an update on what they're doing. And some of those other committees would be like the Historic Society, be the Gather in the Circle Group, the American, not American Bloom, Newtown Square and Bloom. The Business Association would have an opportunity to kind of share some of the things that they're doing so that we look as a community that we're coordinating events throughout where we can. And so, but the focal, main focus would be our own committees. And then the second half of the meeting would be bringing in some of the other committees that are functioning throughout the town that are working, doing things to help improve our community.
I think it sounds like a great idea, Mr. Nice. So would you be able to do this in anything smaller than a football stadium with things like that? I mean, we're talking thirty, forty people.
Well, I actually think that the, most of the focus initially would be that we would just bring the chairman of each of those committees or chairperson, I'm sorry, chairperson of each of those committees in at this point. And if we needed to bring additional folks in, we would do that.
I think so, it's okay.
Yeah, so it really, it's just to make sure that information is being shared between all the committees. And I thought it was a great idea because I know that there's some things going on that we're trying to share. And sometimes we're spending a lot of time in every one of those meetings explaining what's going on in another group. And if we could make sure everybody has all that information kind of upfront, it would be helpful.
No, I think it's a great idea. Did everybody talking to each other, there's nothing wrong with that.
Yeah. So the other thing that I have, you know, the EAC had put together a resolution for Ready for One Hundred to ask you to review. It's been reviewed, it's now back at the EAC. But I attended the, well, I attend regularly the COG meetings. But this last month, we had somebody come in from Sustainability PA to speak and their program is much more, is much broader. Their program is speaks not only just about looking at energy issues, but looking at everything the township does for sustainability. Looks at the finances, it looks at your, how you're handling public works projects. It looks at what you're doing for public health, what you're doing. It literally has like nine different areas that it takes a look at. And so what I would like to recommend is that if it's okay with you, the staff will take some time, review that project, kind of look at the criteria of Sustainability PA. Look at how hard it would be for us to even, there's, there's five levels. There's an associate level, a bronze level, a silver lever, a gold level and a platinum level. But to look at that and kind of see what it would take for us to, you know, where we would fall today and then where we might fall if we started putting some real effort into this. And I think that we would really be able to look at really a sustainability from a holistic approach versus just looking at it from energy use, but looking at it from all things that we do. And then we might use that along with our strategic plans for our setting of our goals for each year and what we're going to try to accomplish. If if the board is okay with that, that would be the direction I'd like to go. And within either next meeting or the first meeting in April, we would be able to come back to you and give you a more complete presentation of what this would look like and what what, what, what it would take for us to move forward. In addition, you know, it's not eliminating ever doing Ready for One Hundred. It's just looking at something that's more holistic for now. And then possibly in the process, Ready for One Hundred comes along with it.
I mean, that's, that's fine with me. I think that's a good approach. I don't know how other board members feel on that. Does everybody think that's a good idea?
The EAC's fine with it and I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm fine with that.
Yep.
Mr. Nice, let me back up for a minute on the, I'll state on the RFPs with regards to our ninety-day extension for Marple Township to provide for our health inspector services. That was simply done to allow us time to go find another health inspector, correct?
That is correct. We're not, we're only doing, they've put in that they would like to terminate the agreement. We've agreed to the termination. It's just that I, I had to, we had to put out an RFP to go find a health inspector. And we're working very hard right now to do that. And if we can find one in less than ninety days, we've, we've agreed that we would take over those responsibilities immediately. And so we're looking for that, even if it's on a temporary basis to get us going for a period of time until we can get somebody full-time.
It's best to have one while we're looking for a new one than to not have one at all, I guess.
Correct.
Okay.
We have, we have places that still need to be inspected.
Sure. Anybody else on the board have any questions for Mr. Nice on any of the items in his report?
I do.
No.
I think Altieri does.
Steve, just going off that health inspector. Now that the county has its own health department, are we expecting any changes in terms of the traditional roles for health inspectors and, and, you know, of the sort like that? Well, is the county and, but you know, partially I should do my own research on this, but I didn't know if you have heard anything from how the county is expected to kind of implement that county health department. You know, if it's trickling down to the municipalities in terms of taking over some of the works that the municipalities are doing now or vice versa.
So I think the ultimate answer is if a municipality were to choose to, the health, the county would take over roles. I think it's probably the best way to describe it. If it can, if the municipality is currently doing certain tasks on their own, I don't know that the county's coming in and saying you have to use the county to do that. I, I think that I've been around Pennsylvania long enough that most municipalities would dig their heels in and say, we're not doing that just because they could. But I do think that the county's going to offer those services to the different municipalities. So that I think in short to your answer is I believe every service that we need covered would be offered by the county. And so, but I think it is up to us to enter into the agreement with the county if we choose to have them serve in that way is how I understand how they're approaching.
Got it. And I'm guessing they're not even focused on that aspect yet. I'm guessing they're just trying to just get up and running and get vaccines in people's arms.
Yeah, my understanding is that they're at least till December before that would be the case. Before they would even be in a, as I understand it, it's going to, there's a lot that they have to do to meet the state regulations to have a county health department. And so they are, they are working through that at this time. And I anticipate that based on what the report that we got back when I was at one of our COG meetings was that that was probably December before they were even ready to start having the conversations to that level of detail about them taking over. They may be having the conversation before then, but it would be at least December, probably into like two thousand and twenty-two before they could actually start doing the work.
Got it. And to the members of the public who are watching and keep hearing you say the word COG, what does that mean?
Yeah, COG is the Council of Governments. Thank you, I, I meant to state that and I forget sometimes. It's the Council of Governments and it's a group of municipalities in Delaware County that agree to meet together and work together as, as we can on different topics. Most of, most of the folks that are meeting there are managers, but that's not always the case. It's, it's representatives of different, of the different municipalities within the county.
Perfect. And the last thing I just have is the, actually, no, you know, I'll send you an email on the other stuff. It's something to be addressed publicly.
Okay.
And I wanted to make Ed happy.
Good idea.
If there's no further questions for Mr. Nice, we will move on. All right, next on the agenda, we have three escrow releases all for completed grading projects. I'll read them. I think we can take them all in one motion. This would be a motion to approve the one thousand two hundred and seventy-five cent escrow release to Mark Lang at Twenty-Six Sugar Makeable Drive, the three hundred and sixty-seven dollar escrow release payment to Rayanne Robinson at Three Bakers Lane and the one hundred and eighty-one dollar fifty cent escrow release payment to Thomas Trey at three fifty-three Echo Valley Lane. These are all for completed grading projects. I'll entertain a motion for approval of all three.
I'll move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Russo to approve items eleven point one through eleven point three. Any further questions or discussions on the motion? Seeing or hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda is bills. I had the pleasure of reviewing our bills on track register A dated today in the amount of threatening nine thousand six hundred and forty dollars and twenty-six cents. And is my motion that we approve those bills. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is seconded by Supervisor Partridge. Any further questions or discussions on the motion? Hearing or seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda, we have an item to consider rejecting the Muirwood Phase Two final release request as advised by our township engineer. And I think you've all had a time or have at least access to the township engineer's letter. There's three things that are missed. One is a missing MPDES permit for the termination of the project that's required by the Delaware County Conservation District. The other is a continual basement flooding problem at, looks like thirty-five eighty-four Muirwood Road. And there's also, the third item is outstanding invoices dating back to September of twenty twenty that remain unpaid. So because of the absence of all three of those, our township engineer is recommending rejection of their final escrow release. Would anybody like to offer a motion rejecting their final escrow release?
I moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Which was made by Supervisor Altieri, seconded by Supervisor Russo to reject the escrow release for Muirwood. Any further questions or discussion or questions for our engineer on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, under new business, we have a consider awarding the two-year traffic signal maintenance contract to Signal Service of Westchester. McMahon Associates was retained to provide, to review this, write it, I guess, review it. And they provided a recommendation for award. I'll entertain a motion for approval, then we can get any questions out on the table.
Some of per pool.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Roberts Lightcap to approve the traffic signal maintenance contract to Signal Service. Mr. Nice, if I'm not mistaken, is the traffic signal or is the signal service our current maintenance vendor?
They are.
Okay. And we took a look at their, or we wrote, I guess, our own RFP and they are still the best choice for us in this regard, according to.
Yes, so this was done by a state-allowed process.
Okay.
Penn Dot gives very specific ways of which we can pick contractors. And so this was done on what they call the hybrid approach. It's the combination of lowest bid as well as basically a determination of their qualifications. And based on the bidding process and the setup that McMahon had done to determine the weight to each area, Signal Service did get the award.
So.
Or was the one that they're recommending, I shouldn't say.
Yeah.
So despite all this, our current vendor is still the recommended vendor for our signals.
That is correct.
Okay.
Steve, I'm sorry, John. Steve, is this in line with our same pricing as last, as two years ago? Is it, has it gone up significantly or? It's not a lot of.
I, I, I don't think the, I don't think it's gone up significantly. It may have gone up a little bit. I would have to check with George and I can do that. And I'll try to get an answer before the end of the meeting. George is not on this evening.
Given that that we want to support, or do we want to hold this?
No, it's, it's fine. The contract's a total of $4,525.
Right.
Okay.
Which is.
And there are, I, and I just got a text from George. I guess he is on or at least watching. He said it's consistent pricing.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to be sure.
So there are some pricing in this that is for when we had things that are outs, the 4,000 is, and that's the reason why we didn't just put the 4,000 down. 4,000 is for their annual inspections and what they do to do that. But there's also maintenance work that goes along and that's done on an hourly. It's done on a time and material basis. And so that's a part of the piece as well.
Okay.
Right.
Any further questions for Mr. Nice on this item? If not, motion was made and seconded to approve the award. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving right along under old business, our first item is discussing about the stop sign installation at the intersection of Partridge and Crumb Creek Lanes. We have correspondence on that, Mr. Nice. So would you like to shed anything on this?
I, I would just mention that the engineer and our chief looked at it. They believe that the stop sign belongs on Partridge Lane, which is where it comes in as a T. And would, would, that would be their recommendation. There is a site distance issue that's mentioned in there. It was recommended that we kind of wait until the trees that are there butt out and then determine how much we would suggest that they have to be cut back in order for that to work. But it, it, it probably needs to be addressed whether there's a stop sign there or not. Just because if it's in the triangle, it's in the triangle.
Right.
And so, so that was, that is their recommendation specific to that. I would say there was a couple of things that are not in this, in the recommendation that the chief and I've been discussing. And I don't want to muddy the waters, but he and I did talk about that. We think that speed limit signs need to be put on Crumb Creek. We went down, we didn't find any speed limit signs and that would allow them to do enforcement in that area. So we're going to work on doing that. I don't think we need action from the board to do that. We can just do it and we will. The second thing would be, and we anticipate that once this is done, we may need to come back and look at stop signs at Partridge and Crumb Creek and Partridge and Battles. Because those, that's, I, we believe that that's the flow that the traffic goes through and is continues to kind of keep moving. And those are where the two Ts meet, meet Battles Lane and meet Crumb Creek.
Okay, do you, now, if, if we agree that we need a stop sign here as recommended, you don't really need a motion from us right now because you're going to have to put that in to modify our ordinance to include that stop sign, correct?
Well, I, I, I guess what I would look for is two actions. One is if you want us to go ahead and install the stop sign today, we would go ahead and get the stop sign installed right away. But then we would have to modify the ordinance to allow for enforcement.
And we could have that ready for the next meeting, correct? The ordinance modification?
I would defer to our solicitor, but I would think that we could at least have it ready for your approval to advertise if you want to give us approval.
They, you don't need the ordinance to install, obviously, the stop sign. If the board wants to make a motion to allow me to advertise, to amend the ordinance, I can do so. It's chapter 165. I believe it's like section L for Echo Valley. So, I mean, I could advertise it and have it ready for the next meeting. So, so move to advertise.
And install and.
Install this, we don't need a motion to install the stop sign, right?
Well, we do need a motion.
Okay, yeah, and install the stop sign immediately.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Which was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Russo to install the stop sign and authorize our solicitor to advertise changes to the ordinance. Any further questions or discussions on this item? Hearing or seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 15.2, consider approving policy 2021-02, the private road dedication policy. I trust we've all had a chance to take a look at it. I guess we'll start any discussion. Remember, I want to jump right to a motion. That's fine, too.
Let's start with the discussion first. There is. Okay. So the first question that I have, and just so I can understand how this is supposed to be written. And it's, it's a typo, but I just want to understand how we're fleshing it out. Well, before I get to my, the, the question I have, Mr. Catania, based off of the comments that were provided in public comment, do you think there's anything in here that we need to change from a legal perspective to include, you know, all the roads that we're speaking of, both private and paper?
No, not that I'm aware of.
You don't have a problem in your legal opinion that it would incorporate everything that we're going after and there's no need to differentiate between it?
No, not as a, not as a dedicate, as a policy, no, not at all.
Okay. Because essentially you could use those words interchangeably, private versus paper. Both of them, I mean, a paper street itself is a private street that is owned by the individuals to the center line as delineated in their deed, right?
Well, paper street is exactly what it is. I mean, it's on a plan as a non-dedicated road that the township never really took any action on. A private road could be a paper street, yeah.
Okay. The first question that I have, actually, these are probably all minor ones, Steve, that I could probably just talk to you about because I don't think that, I mean, it's just like, yeah. As I go back and looking at this again. So yeah, I, I don't think any of it actually changes content. It's more or less just, there's this weird phrasing. And, and the way that some, some things are written in that. So I'll just send an email on that. But overall, I mean, it achieves the goal that I, I think we all want is that you know, even though individuals right, wrong, or indifferent buy on a paper street and, and they know that they're buying on a paper street, this township never had a forum for them to go and get their road dedicated. And so what this does now is it allows them to have the opportunity to come to the township and follow a process to get their road dedicated. So I think it's a win for, you know, everyone, including in, you know, I live in the Heights and I live right off of, I'm on a dedicated street, but the street above me is non-dedicated. And so I think it's a win for everyone.
Any other comments on the policy? Hearing none, Mr. Alteri, would you like to make a motion regarding the policy?
I would like to make a motion to approve policy 2021-02, private road dedication.
Is there a second?
Well, actually, I'm, I'm, go ahead.
No, no.
Second.
Okay.
Second, that's fine. So since it is, since we're going for the, the approval, you know, again, it doesn't change the content. But Mr. Catania, there's just typos and, and just phraseology that's kind of not correct. Do you want me to address that now or can I, can we still make those changes and it not change the, the, the policy itself?
Correct. As long as the changes aren't of any substance, you can do that anytime.
Right.
Fair enough. All right. Well, the motion was made by Supervisor Alteri, seconded by Supervisor Partridge to approve the private road dedication policy number 2021-02. Any further questions or discussions on the motion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have nothing listed on the resolutions of legislation in action under 1917 ordinances. We have, this is an amendment amendment to our litter ordinance 2021-01. Would anybody like to read that and offer that as a motion?
I will make the motion to consider approving ordinance 2021-01 litter ordinance amendment. What we are adding is under section 100-6. Specifically, we are adding in this language firm, partnership, association, or corporation, or other business entity to ensure that we can go after all those who are distributing what we refer to as the litter here in the township.
Thank you, Mr. Alteri. Well said. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is made by Supervisor Alteri, seconded by Supervisor Roberts Lightcap to approve the ordinance 2021-01 litter amendment or litter ordinance amendments. Any further questions or discussions on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And with that approval, I trust our legislative and enforcement arms will work their hardest to, to end this practice with some individuals and/or corporations seem to be thumbing their nose at. So I'm trusting we're going to bring all the power to bear that we can against these folks and get this problem addressed. So.
Not noted.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. We have nothing listed under additional business. Would any board member like to make any comments?
Naturally, I do. First one is that on Saturday, March 20th, is the 23rd Annual Chester Ridley Creek Stream Cleanup. We will be meeting at Trexel Lodge Park at nine o'clock. It goes from nine to 11:30. So anyone who is a member of the public that wants to get involved or any of the supervisors, you can contact the township. I think that it might be on the township website, the link. If not, I will make sure, or Mr. Nice will make sure that it gets added to that, to, to the website. So as I said, we'll be meeting at Trexel Lodge Park Saturday, March 20th at nine o'clock to do the cleanup. The second question, more common, I guess, is actually, Mr. Nice, in terms of now that the, the policy is approved for the paper road dedications, what are we or how do we as a township get that information out to those residents who live on paper streets? Or is it just essentially me walking around the affected areas and putting flyers in people's mailboxes, which I have no problem doing?
You can't put in mailboxes.
Well, you, okay, I'll hang them.
Get a letter.
I mean, we, I mean, we will obviously post it as a policy that's available. We'll put it out as a news blast. We'll put it out on, we can put it out on Facebook. But if specifically to those residents, we don't typically have a way to do that. If you want to do that, we can, we can come up with something and try to do that if the board so directs.
We're going, we're going to put it on the website, right?
So.
Yeah. I mean, that's what we normally do with other.
That's our typical. We put it on the website and often, you know, and we try on different times to also put it on our Facebook page and, you know, we can definitely do that.
I, I think that's, that's our norm. That's what I would suggest.
Yeah, I don't want to reinvent the wheel. I just need to know something that, you know, of its nature. If there is any other way that we do it, but yeah, let's not reinvent the wheel on that one. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Well, thank you, Mr. Alteri. Any other board members would like to make a comment? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to the public comment portion of the evening. This is public comment for items that are not listed on the agenda. So if you'd like to make a comment, please raise your hand and be heard. It looks like we have one hand. Mr. Nice, if you could allow Ms. Wilson to speak.
She should be able to speak.
Patty Wilson, 4111 Battle Lane. Offering that despite the township building being closed to visitors, I believe and ask that you direct the township manager to make it possible for the tax collection office to be open to the public. It's right as you come in the door of the township building. It's behind plexiglass. It's safe. With the, with the U.S. Postal Service being inconsistent in their delivery and no opportunity to do online payments, the outdoor box is a less than ideal solution. I believe this would be in the best interest of the residents to at least get that office open. I, I know in the past, I, I dropped mine in the box, but I was really uncomfortable with it. And I can't imagine that some number of our residents that have been able to and, and have always come into the township to pay their taxes. This, this is going to throw them off and I, I don't see any good reason not to at least open that office. Urging you as prior to or part of the zoning rewrite to finally commit to an open space acquisition plan. I've offered in the past that you should consider to eminent domain or purchase the quarry properties at Westchester Pike College Ellis in Maine. I urge you to work with Garrett Williamson and the conservation groups because the municipal authority was making noise that they anticipated development there. You did it at Sawmill and Route 252, getting opportunities for passive development in this township, given the level of traffic and development. I, I urge you to do that. In your prior meeting, because I listened to this meeting, I happened to be out of town, there was a discussion in response to a resident's public comment about the zoning hearing board's actions. Ultimately, you, the Board of Supervisors, are responsible at the very least to ensure that you are choosing members who know and apply the law. We, we now have a zoning hearing board that, near as I can tell, have not been educated in zoning law. You are also responsible, I believe, to be aware of the actions that they have taken and to publicly affirm the decisions or seek to involve and appeal any of their decisions where you believe they've made an error. And since there have been so many zoning hearing board decisions based on the smaller lots or not lots and developers coming in, and especially that particular resident noted what was going on at 123 Walnut, I, I really would urge you to get more involved in understanding the decisions they're making and deciding whether or not it's in the best interest or they've made the right decision. Yes, I understand that they are independent, but ultimately you are responsible because you, you not only appoint the members, but you have the ability to hold their decisions accountable. At that meeting as well, Supervisor Russo especially and others noted that developers were coming on the agenda soon after planning and zoning. And the case that you discussed was actually being determined before the appeal period had expired on their zoning relief. And honestly, probably didn't even have a written decision. In response, you all voted yes to approve the developer's application. It was incomplete and inaccurate. Yet you all said yes to it. Then you went on to seemingly indicate that the problem was that it had been put on the agenda. I don't view that as a problem. You approved, approved the agenda. You could have chosen to not have those be on the agenda, even at the beginning of the meeting, where you could have asked to have it removed. Or you could have voted no in that particular instance. In that, in my view, the comments that you made, that you got right, was to speak about how favorably we treat developers. And that particular case was almost unbelievable to me. That's an understatement. The responsibility for development ultimately resides in your hands. Rather than quickly allow a developer to be, come on an agenda before their zoning relief had even gone through the appeal period, I, I think is irresponsible. I really think as it relates to development, we have to hold developers accountable and not be rushing to say yes or to waiver land development. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mrs. Wilson. Yeah, your comments are well known, well taken. Do note that under the last, I believe with the reference to the developers item that you referenced, I believe there was a time constraint that our inaction would have resulted in approval nonetheless. The zoning process and the land development process are two separate processes. So sometimes there's not much that we can do as timing. The board, again, notes your comments and is taking action to make our presence at the zoning hearing board more known. So if you do attend those meetings, I think you'll see our presence there more often. We have one other hand up from Reggie Sabersky, Mr. Nice.
Mrs. Sabersky, if you unmute yourself, you should be able to talk. Now, we're not hearing you, Reggie, if you're speaking.
No, I don't see her microphone moving at all.
Yeah, Reggie, you may need to adjust your mic on the computer itself, not on the program for Zoom. You may just need to turn the volume up. Or turn it on. We're still not hearing you, Reggie.
Well, Reggie, if you can hear us, we certainly would welcome your comments. If you want to put. If you want to put them in writing and, and make sure we have them at the next meeting, that would be wonderful. Or, uh, we're always happy to listen to you and hear you, but right now we can't, so. Uh, if there's no other public comment, then we will adjourn at this point. I thank everybody for participating. Our next meeting is March 22nd, uh, at same time, 7:00 P.M. Please stay happy and safe during that time period as the weather turns. Make sure you frequent our businesses, especially our restaurants. I noticed many of them are getting all their outdoor tents out and their tables and their umbrellas out. So, uh, by all means, get out with your family, walk around, go have a meal and enjoy yourselves and we'll see everybody on the 22nd. Thanks.